Number three is the best and number one's the worst.
Three is the best. Is it on the echo cancelling microphones? Okay, Matt, can you hear me now? He's got his hand up. What's he trying to tell me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Amanda and Matt, I appreciate, I apologize. Do you want to speak to Stantec? I know you're new on the board, but is there anything you'd like to say?
No, I've just been very happy with the service we get from them. It seems like every time we've we've come to them with a request or a project or an update or whatever it may be, they've been able to deliver for us. So I just want to thank them for that and I look forward to continuing to work with them.
All right, Chris.
I I just learned a lot about my board this evening. So I always think you guys are too high, too ridiculous, cost too much. And I always kind of watch that. I am impressed that the rest of my board thinks highly of you. I do think highly of you. I just am concerned about the money. And with that, I guess if the rest of them are watching with me, then I'll be fine with your cost. Thank you for your work.
I'm gonna, um, can I amend mine or you want to wait till everybody spoke?
Let's wait till everybody speaks and then you come back. I'll come back to you next after Justin.
I I think that the hard part for me to judge on this one is I don't work with you guys on all the stuff, right? I don't work on public works. I work on plan commission. We do work with you guys on some of the high level stuff, but again, you guys are really engaged with parks. You're really engaged with plan commission. You guys do a lot of the work with certain aspects of it. There are components to plan commission that I do get exposed to, but we don't see the big ticket items, right? We're not seeing the the time walking out. We're not seeing you guys doing the, you know, the measuring of the roads and all that stuff. I think the hardest part, and I can understand what Supervisor Marshall said with the cost, is that this is an expensive business and the town made a decision to get into an expensive business of zoning and roads and everything else and kind of having that as a service. So I understand that, but I think, you know, as we've all experienced, I do ask, right? Where are we at? With things, you know, I think the most recent one was the that pesky, what is the, what is the?
Outdoor Rec Plan?
The Outdoor Rec Plan, I think, I think we've, we've heard, I've asked the question, making sure we don't get away with things. So I think it's, it's more of just making sure we we understand and we keep working together on that to make sure we stay within reason. I don't think you know, again, I don't work on the big budget items, so I don't necessarily see it all the time. But at the same time, I, I understand the, the relationship and the business that you guys are in is not a cheap one. So I do thank you all both for your knowledge. Everyone who's worked, that I've worked with you guys, super professional, very clear when asked certain questions or the follow-up has been there. You know, I love the deliverables. It's just making sure that we keep on target. So, thank you.
Terry?
I have one, I have one.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to you and I'll let Terry speak and then we'll go to her and then you.
Okay.
I just want to say I really appreciate everything Stantec does. You guys have taught me a lot. You're always available. You help me out immensely. I really appreciate all three of you very much. So, thank you.
Okay, back to you.
So I'm going out, but I haven't really made any bones about it. If you wanted, everybody just sugar coated over it. I have no problem with you as a person or Kelly, you as a person, but I'm just gonna say this. I believe the town should go for an RFP and look for comps choices and a true Wisconsin company. I've written it right, a note right here. I think you were amiss for the town of St. Joe with the needs of the park, the outdoor recreation plan. I would have liked to seen West Central Regional Planning be the one that where we have a relationship for some other things. I think that financially we were amiss by not using them. And it is not easy to be working with someone who is no boots on the ground that has never been in the town of St. Joseph and/or is here very little. I don't, I don't think there was and think they had a handle on what the needs were. And I thought the outdoor recreation plan was a disaster. And compared to when I look at the work that was done on our chapter eighty-one by another company. The, the two park projects were more than difficult and they, they go on and on and on. And I really don't, so that's really where I'm at, Lee. That I, I don't think that we did, the town of St. Joseph did our job by by just not looking for other cert, other companies that we could do a business from it. And as far as engineering, as far as your fees, it's like an attorney, an engineering firm, uh, you're, you're the type of professionals, you're an expensive group of people starting out. And I know there's, it's like a plumber or any of those other ones. It's uh, when we're looking at big numbers, so that's really the sticks in my car, the are the, the ones I just said, as far as your road stuff and I, from what I see, your paper is, your paperwork is beautiful on the stuff that you're working on like that, that's A1. And what you bring for us to work with, with budgets is fabulous. And I don't know that you even have any control over what my complaints are.
Chris?
I, I'm gonna use my, I put my thought process away, I guess. The one question that I'm just developed was, and you don't have to give me any names. Do you in your industry have three competitors that you fear? That perform just as well as you guys?
Well, there's certainly several competitors out there that do good work. From our perspective, I think fear would be the, not the right word.
Well, and maybe I'm rusty at that I, I look at my industry and I don't have competitors. They're all behind me. I do a first-class job.
Sure.
And so I'm just asking.
Yeah. Well, in, in our business, there's, there's three or four competitors in the Twin Cities that, that all do, you know, some similar work. Stantec is different than all of them.
Okay.
In that we can bring absolutely anything that you can think of to the table. Now, that's not something the town needs all the time, or maybe hardly ever.
No, you.
But there, there are things that, you know, make Stantec different. So the comparison, you know, only goes so far, as far as that goes.
No, and, and so through your answers, none of them are in Wisconsin.
That is, well, uh, some of our competitors have Wisconsin offices.
Well, okay. And I know you acquired one of them that's off, awesome.
Yeah.
But I thought Stantec was a Wisconsin company with Minnesota offices. Yeah, they're a Wisconsin company.
Sure.
We have, we have Minnesota, Wisconsin.
I, I have, they have branches in Wisconsin.
No, their main headquarters is in Wisconsin.
No, Stantec's main headquarters is in Edmonton, Canada.
Oh, Canada, sorry.
Yeah. So, and we have, we have offices in every state.
Every state.
And, and that piece, I get business, right? We, we get how you have to consume to stay alive, right? I just, I just wanted to learn that piece, you know, like you acquiring Angela, that, that's a huge impact to the area.
When did you get Angela?
It was before Christmas.
Before Christmas, they acquired that company.
Where was she at?
She owned her own.
Yeah, Angela owned Stevens Engineering.
Angela Popenhagen?
Yep, and we, we decided to come together.
Cause she used to work for Bonus Stroll.
Many years ago. Yeah.
When we hired Bonus Stroll the first time, she was with them.
What's her focus?
Uh, Western Wisconsin still.
No, what is, what, what, uh, what's her expertise as an engineer?
She's a civil engineer like myself.
Yeah.
I mean, a civil engineer.
Yeah, she's nice. She, she's good. She's a good school.
She, she's the person who showed me around my first day at Bonus Stroll.
I would believe that. Um, I wanted to say something to what you were talking about too, is that when the town decided to hire Bonus Stroll at the time, that turned into Stantec. One of the reasons we hired them was because of our difficult relationship that we had had with a prior engineering firm who was outsourcing every single thing we needed beyond a surveyor and a lead engineer. So everything that had to do with water, we had to outsource, everything that had to do with.
So the bill get higher and higher.
Higher and, and we were paying for all these outside people that are just gonna charge you whatever they want. And when the board went for an RFP at the time, they were looking for a firm that was able to provide planning services, you know, services if we needed any water delineations, which we needed throughout the town at all times with all these road projects. And something that would not cost us an arm and a leg like what we were paying. And that's what pushed us over and let us hire Bonus Stroll, which in turn was taken over by Stantec. You know, I appreciate the fact that the board may want to look for an RFP, but I don't think this year is the year you want to do that. Because you're trying to get your money back from the state on the road project, but they have to submit and, and walk through that. And we're in the middle of a building project that we've already committed to an engineer from their firm, Arctic Engineer, to get that done. And it's very difficult to have two firms trying to do the whole job. So I'm willing to look at that in the future, but I'm not willing to look at that now.
I'm still, before you get overly defensive.
I'm not defensive. I'm just saying what my, what I believe.
I, and that's fine, Teresa. Um, I think, I think your parks and your outdoor recreation plan and maybe even as far as the comp plan, I don't know. But I think in those particular specialized things, I think those were, I think they are a one, one that could have been handled differently and not just I think we've reached the point, Teresa, this community is not no longer a one-stop shopping for engineering services, just like New Richmond has become, the county has become. And I'm just putting it out there as a direction that can be considered in the future with no immediate action to be taken. I'm not, I am not suggestion, suggesting tonight, we're gonna dump Stantec and go out for an RFP and, and handle a brand-new engineering firm to handle all the needs of the town because that would be a tragedy to do it that way also. You need to look, you need to look bigger and beyond the place where you have taken the town, that we are not what we were ten years ago, five years ago.
Can I add something to this?
Go ahead.
Discussion? I think I think Stantec is in a very awkward position with the town. Stantec, to me, deals with larger municipalities than we do. They came in and it's kind of like you wouldn't order a full excavator to go dig a garden hole, right? Like, it's just sometimes you bought too big of, of a buy-in for what you were trying to do. And I think what I'm hearing, and these decisions came before I came on the board, is there's some frustration where it's like, you know, now we try to do something small, like update the outdoor rec plan or something, and it's coming in at this massive effort. I think the flip side of that discussion is, and I, I can't speak for the office or Terry, but maintaining multiple vendors is nightmarish for municipalities because you are basically trying to play the game of how much effort do you put in? I think that the relationship has had good in the fact that we can pull on some of their experiences with larger municipalities, right? What mistakes did they make or what mistakes and concerns have they had? That if we ever had to grow that way, we can steer clear of, right? But the flip side is, I think there's some pain being the we have a vendor who's used to dealing with larger groups and maybe isn't able to do the, I don't want to call it boutique or tailored services that maybe we required in certain places. But I think that was always gonna be the, the case. You were gonna get it six and one and a half and it was the other. Or you were gonna end up with having five different vendors to try and achieve that. That's I, what I wanted to just try and state is, I don't think this is a, a speech of your guys' quality of work. I think it's based on the scope of what we do versus the scope and breadth of what you guys have the ability to take on, right? And I think that's where we've kind of come into the you bought slightly too big of a tool for the job you were trying to achieve in certain places. I think some places are.
I can appreciate your point of view.
But I want him to answer to that first.
I think mine's gonna segue.
All right.
I, I have a question for you. Is it possible that the town of St. Joe are this is not, we're, we're doing, we're elected officials doing the job that we're doing and we're doing in fair or above or even maybe better than most. But on the other hand, do you have many, many accounts that you are dealing with higher-level professional employees of the communities that you're working with? And that when your job is at, with those higher-level employees that do all the legwork, that's your interaction and at this, when it gets to the boards or the commissions or the whatever, the councils, that they really are just finalizing paperwork.
I will try to answer that in the context of everything that was just said. Um, we have a wide range of size of clients. St. Joe is not the only township that we take care of. Um, we have multiple townships over in the western side of the Twin Cities. Um, and so there is a spectrum of what we do. And, you know, we, we feel based on his history that we're very successful with those smaller clients. I think one of the things that's, that's neat about that is the smaller clients and the medium clients, the big clients are all extremely different. Um, you know, while I was here in St. Joe, I was also being a project manager for Minneapolis, you know, as part of their staff. Um, and so having that range of experiences, first of all, is very um, rewarding for people on our team to be able to work on that wide range and, and different type of client. Um, and we work very hard to for lack of a better term, maybe mold ourselves to our clients. Um, regardless of their size or how they choose to approach, you know, the engineering challenges. Um, and that's, you know, I, I have Ben and Kelly and, and others on the team, we've been doing that for, you know, I've been doing it for decades, but, um, this will be my thirtieth year at Bonus Stroll slash Stantec in July. Um, and so, you know, we are a larger firm. And, you know, if, you know, if there are some firms that have five people in it, that, you know, has some niche uh, expertise, you know, that might be more economical, that's possible that that's out there. But I think, you know, we do bring a level of experience um, that was mentioned here, that, you know, we can head off issues or avoid issues. You know, after we've, we've kind of been there, done that many, 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 many times. So I guess for my part, you know, we are greatly, greatly appreciative that the town has us as a partner. Uh, we do not take that for granted. We value it very highly. You know, every client has its, its positives and every client, you know, has its challenges. And, you know, this particular town, this particular client for us, uh, is really great to work for. Um, you know, you, you don't always hear from the happy people and any municipality.
You never do.
Yep.
But, but here, we do hear from happy people, I think probably a little bit more than we do in some other communities, especially on Church Street. You know, that was just amazing, like you mentioned. And, and there are people that aren't happy here too. And that's just all part of the business. And, you know, we've, we've experienced that a lot and we do our best to work with those folks. And ninety-nine percent of the time, we, we end up, you know, having at least a re, a reasonable relationship, if not win, win those folks over. So that's to us, the relationship and uh, the connections with the community, you know, obviously with the board, but also with the residents is, is really high priority for us. Um, you know, we are, you know, we are client-focused and, you know, Stantec is a big company, but the thing that motivates me is serving my clients. And that's the same with Kelly and all the other people that, that I gather to our team because I, I can make those choices, who comes on my team. So.
And I appreciate the fact that you've had people like Bruce be with us for years, off and on, and for Phil Carson, Carlson, who's been with us for years, off and on. Amanda's new to this. Kelly, we've had for a few years, but Amanda's new. So I'll give each of you, Kelly, if you wanted to say anything, or you just reiterate, it's up to you and I'll let Amanda speak. Yeah. And then Matt wants to speak. I see his hand up. Go ahead.
I just kind of want to piggyback on, on what Leah said and, you know, to get back to your question too. Um, you know, I, I work with a variety of clients in various capacities. Many of them are small clients. St. Joe, I would say population-wise, is not the smallest client that I work with. For example, today I spent my morning at a, at another client, they have a, a staff of four, I think, you know, they have a city administrator, two public works employees and a, and a clerk. And, you know, so I was meeting with them and, you know, working through various issues and, you know. So, you know, to answer your question, you know, you know, no, we, we do work the variety of different clients and in different capacities, you know, some do have more staff than others. Um, and then also, you know, in general, you know, Stantec supports that. They don't look at, you know, who are your clients? How big are they? You know, we need to, you know, have larger clients, you know, they, they support our, our local presence and our local clients. And, you know, I definitely see that, having been with Stantec for, you know, almost twenty years and, you know, going through the, um, you know, the acquisition from, from Bonus Stroll and, you know, just the continuity that we have with many of our, um, our clients and many of, you know, the smaller clients, including townships.
How can it be twenty years? Come on. Come on.
Yeah.
Amanda, do you want to speak and then I'm gonna give it over to Matt?
Sure, I will add something. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, yeah, I'll just add to Lee and Kelly's comments that our offices in the eastern side of the state where I'm located, uh, we like to actually pride ourselves on being trusted advisors for those rural, smaller communities. Uh, personally, I have several other clients that are similar in size to St. Joe, some even smaller. And I feel that it was rather seamless of a transition when we began to offer you planning services as you administered your zoning code because it truly was right in our wheelhouse. Um, and because of that, I really do enjoy working with you and would love to continue our partnership.
Thank you. And Matt?
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to, that we just reiterate, it, it, it kind of Justin hit on it a little bit too, is that we have made, you know, the fundamental decision to be a high-service town. This has helped property values tremendously and we still remain a place for people to move to. You know, we can be like the town that, there was a resident that brought up a town during the public hearing, we were talking about the building, in which offers little to no services, and that was the, the tax argument there. And, and I can't remember the name of the town right now, and, and that's the reason for it. It, it's probably a dead or a dying town. It doesn't offer anything. And so what I've heard is just, you know, everybody's, you know, I shouldn't say everybody, what, what I've heard is people are, you know, not unhappy with the product, but unhappy with the price. And, you know, if, if we're not, if we're unhappy with the product, I can see the grapes, but it, this is kind of the, the price we have to pay for some of that professionalism and for that professional service. And there is a lot to say, that we get a lot, we get that full spectrum of service from, from one agency. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I try to keep up on what's going on in St. Craig County with other engineering firms, because yours is not the only one I pay attention to. Um, and it isn't the town of Hudson. It's someone else altogether. They went out for, um, cost estimates on a comprehensive plan. And one of the cost estimates they got back on someone that they've used in the past, I almost choked on. And I thought, oh my goodness, now this is for an update was thirty-nine thousand dollars. And I almost fell off my chair when I heard that number.
What date, what year was that?
A month ago.
I'd say thirty-nine for an update would be what I would expect it to be.
No, town of Hudson did it for half that.
Well.
From a reputable firm, I mean. This year, I mean, I shouldn't say twenty-three, end of twenty-three, it was updated in November.
Did they just do an amendment and an update, or was it a full blown comp?
They had a full blown comp plan and they updated the entire thing.
Well, ours was a hundred and ten. When we did it in twenty sixteen.
So we'll see, but anyway, that's coming down the road too.
So that's kind of an interesting.
So thank you so much for coming and meeting with us, we appreciate it. Your contract that we've had for many years is still in play, I don't know if there's something you want to change on that.
You know, that's something that, you know, it's, it's been around for a long time, if, if the town would like to. You know, update it and just have an updated contract, that's something we can take a look at.
It's in our drive, so if anyone wants to look at it, they can and we'll come back to you if we want to change something.
Yeah, so I mean, as far as we're concerned, um, we don't typically. You know, precipitate those things unless we feel like the town is interested in that type of thing. So, you know, we'll, we'll wait for you to.
Let us know.
Give us a thought.
Well, thank you very much for coming, you guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
We'll see if Sunny Link's out there in the parking lot waiting on us or if he forgot.
Twenty nineteen, we had to change the rates.
We'll see you in two weeks. For the board meeting, I just threw the agenda out today, so. Thanks again.
Have a good evening.
I don't let it send me notifications, I've got it set up so it doesn't send me anything. Yeah, have a look.
There's all kinds of shit written on there about us.
Now what?
Oh, you're not talking about our town emails.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, that iPad that I have is just for here. The supervisor forums and it's talking about neighbors on one hundred and sixty-five. Neighbors over here, neighbors, I never click on it to read it, you know? It's that, it's called next door or some shit.
On your town?
Yeah, something said love. Just like so, someone signed lineup for LinkedIn. Oh, okay, I'm like, I don't know, can you guys read all that shit?
She'll do it, she can do it.
Are you here tomorrow or next week?
I'm gonna be in here tomorrow.
Well, just, you can text him with the time, text the time.
It made me the lineup, all I wanted to have was this discussion. Oh, I'm so bad, people are sending screenshots. I, I actually. I love it through my wife's shit that she signs up for through Somerset now or whatever the. Bolton saves the world or whatever Facebook site her on, and she's like, are you really good with this here, I'm like. Sure, yeah, that's. You know, you think as work numbers, we could probably know what's going on in the township more than most. Well, I always tell her that she gets pissed and, well, it's on her, it's true. And she don't want to read Bible, would you believe that shit?
I don't think you have to wait long. Usually pretty efficient here. I'm alright, I'm doing good, you guys? One day at a time, right? That may help.
I'm sorry, Matt, I, we're planning on putting a couple of feet of rock around the building where there's no sidewalks. Which is mostly the south side and then either in, under this. And hopefully that will keep your mower far enough away that we don't have to worry about dinging the building. Then from the west door forward and from the east door forward will be sidewalks. And those sidewalks will be against the building, because on this side is going to have two restrooms on the outside. Entrance from the outside and then a door, so.
How far off the current parking lot is it?
Well, that's to be determined, because now that we have. Um, are aware where the line is, we're going to see how far parking can go, we may be able to put two lines of parking in front of it or just one. If we put one, it'll have a boulevard between, if we put two, it'll be back to back with this parking with bu- byards. Or, or concrete, you know, curbs or something, don't know, won't know until February first.
Yeah, whoever you talk to, just say, look at it like you're gonna mow it yourself.
That's what I thought.
I mean, it's the same with when I've been working with churches and they go, oh, we're thinking about putting this fancy fence in right here and I'm like. You have this much area of snow that has to end up on five feet of grass. And that fence is not gonna make it. And they're like, oh, good point, you know, so, yeah. I mean, the easier that you make it for me, the less time it takes and cheaper that I can keep prices.
Well, we hope that we will do that, because we're taking away some of the mowing, so hopefully the price doesn't go up significantly.
And I don't, I don't plan on it, I mean, nothing has changed, you know, economy wise, you know. When fuel went through the roof, you know, you gotta do a little bit to keep your head afloat. So.
We'll start with you, Chris.
Uh, that pretty much sums it up, that there's a big chunk of real estate that you won't have to mow anymore. I hope you think about that in your bills. Yeah, you do a good job, I appreciate that you're a local contractor and thank you for your work.
Thank you, guys. It's nice to be able to just call, you know, if I have a question for any certain random question, I know who I can call. And ask it rather than having to take it through five people to get to that person.
Matt, I'll go to you next, do you have anything you want to say, because you've only been on the board a short time?
No, I have never met, um, and so I just want to say thank you and, you know, I, I defer a lot to.
Leave it the camera, then he can see you.
Defer a lot to the folks that are working with you, uh, mainly Supervisor Marshall, so thank you.
Alright, Lori?
The bonus mowed and it looks good, it took care of the ditches at the cemetery and I wrote on here, no news is good news, so.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, Justin?
I mean, I can't really say much more, um. You were nice enough to let us know when AT&T left their phone line dangling down the road, so, after that, I can't complain too much. I just had Teresa call him, because she's such good friends with AT&T.
Oh, God bless America.
One of your, one of your concerns though was that snow fence that's been put up in the. Ball field that somebody's gonna have to address.
Park committee's gonna have to address that. As to how that's gonna get handled.
Because it wasn't taken down and the holes weren't filled?
No, it is a mess out there. So, park committee needs to get on top of that.
I guess that's where we're gonna be on that for a second here.
Microphone.
That when they come back through for a new renewal of that baseball field, they're gonna get a burning of a lifetime, because I got a bunch of shit to say.
I'd like to see them on the agenda soon.
Well, first of all, you have to put on the parks committee agenda right away and then it can come back to us in March. If you put it on in February, then it can come to us in March before season starts.
Can I do it as simple as to put it on there for a review and?
Because I think the park committee has to come back and say, you, what they do and do not like also, you just can't say, here, we want you to review it, board, what don't you like? And I'm with you, that whole snow fence. Thing out there was garbage.
Well, that, that shed really pissed me off.
I'm mad about that. And they didn't do it.
They're lucky that this is just at a town level and it's let it slip.
Microphone.
Their professionalism was zero. And they did not get the concept of, I'm the boss and I told you what to do, they didn't respect it at all. That building belongs over in the back where we agreed upon it.
Where it is currently, that's where everybody sits to watch the ballgames and now they're just gonna see a shed.
I was looking for mega, mega snow to just push that thing in and we'd show them why.
We told him to put it up against the fence and it's not.
It's like four feet off the fence.
And you can't mow that.
No, my mowers are sixty inches or seventy-two.
Right, but then you can't mow that, I'm upset with it.
The display of ignorance is gonna get corrected.
I appreciate that. Yeah, two of my things, you know, you always ask me what my thoughts are, two of. My list here that I made was that the holes from that fence were filled in, because I don't want to see any kid break an ankle. You know, and if it's not done, you know, let me know and. I'll do it myself, you know, I might say, this is what I need for material costs, but, you know what I'm saying? And number two, the gap in the shed and the fence was kind of, you know, we, I mean, we talked. For many hours about it, and it was just like, wait a minute.
Yeah, I'm glad you were.
I did be, when I thought it was gonna be winter tonight. I went up and walked the fence one more time. Nothing was done to improve that for future use.
So, you know, maybe that reflects what their rental fee is, I don't know.
We have a contract with them, but the board can sure give them notice. And change that. Because that's what the contract states, so, I'm very willing to put that on and it won't go on in February.
I mean, you could, you could just say, look, these holes need to be filled in and if not by this date, we're hiring it and. You'll pay, you'll pay what it is.
That's how we've done other things.
You know? Because you guys can't eat that, they're the ones that, that altered the property here.
We're not making enough money on that to, we're not making money, we're not. We have, we receive money for them to use that.
Right, but it doesn't cost for, it doesn't pay for the mowing of it, it doesn't pay, right. Exactly.
The, 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 whatever the fertilizer treatment that we do is just on that area. Is more than what we get in a year.
Yep, do you know how many times that gets fertilized, is that?
Can you turn my mic on?
They'd have to check, I believe it's twice. And there's, that area is twice and I think there's one other type of. Of, um, treatment on there and I can't remember if it was bugs or weeds or bugs or. Um, like aerating, but there's in this, it's supposed to be only specific to the ball diamond.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I would say it doesn't need more than two applications of something a year, once in the spring to get rid of the dandelions and then after that. The second one would basically take care of like crab grass or quack grass, you know? If the kids are out there running around, that's not fun to run on.
Do you think it's necessary to aerate that, because I, in my opinion, I think that that just provides a place for a weed. Um, non-native and weed seeds to find a soft place to land.
I think. If you start noticing that the grass has compaction on it from all the running, which probably won't ever happen. I would tell you to save your money, in all honesty.
So we don't need it. Based on how much grass is out there and what it grow off and you have to mow it.
I mean. Right, so, yeah, I would say save your money.
That's what I think too.
Do, you know, one or, I mean, the two applications are fantastic, one would be fine in the spring for the dandelions. I mean, you guys have been doing it enough, the Hudson Town Hall does like five applications and I can't keep up mowing. You know, and there's a couple areas that are behind the ball fields that. I mean, I'll show up in seven days and the grass is ten inches tall, I don't know what to do with it. You know?
Yeah, they fertilize a lot.
So, it looks good. I've started cutting it at, you know, over there at five, five and a half inches in some spots, because I can't keep up with it. You know, whereas here, the kids don't want, you can't run in five inches of grass. You know? I mean, I guess it would be good training for them, because they would have to run around, it would be a little bit extra work and when they go somewhere else, it's easier. But.
Anything else for anyone from him? Is there anything you want to tell us about the, um, cemetery? Is everything okay there?
Cemetery seems fine, you know, there was a bunch of branches this spring after we had that March thirty-first, you know? But, um, you know, the wind kind of blew the right way, so all the leaves went back into the woods rather than, you know, me cleaning them up. I mean, I saw they cleaned some up, you know, they always end up in the culvert, you know, so. Yeah, and I, and I did it a couple times too and, you know, and I just basically cleaned the rock path off. But where everything kind of falls, it's just kind of, you know.
Well, I'm glad that it's finally started to stabilize, because you know, when we first did that, we had a lot of trees come down. But now it's stabilized and I'm happy for that.
There is one that kind of probably needs more than volunteers can do, but they're, they've got that on their list.
Well, if it's too big, we're gonna do the tree service.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, that's.
Okay, anything else for him, otherwise I'm, okay, what else do you have on your list?
Um, so, we, I think you guys did a perk test out front, is that what all those dirt piles were for?
We did, and we did one over there and we did one over here.
Are the hosts, I mean, obviously I know that they'll settle out, are we looking at?
Manicure them however you see.
Yes, you manicure them however it's, you said, the ones back here is where the septic system's gonna go. So don't worry about those, just mow around.
And the ones over on the edge of the baseball field are done. Fix the rest of the park BS over there.
Okay, so for these ones, you know, they've, they've settled down a little bit, obviously there's a few rocks that are, you know, half the size of your head. Yep, um, for right now, while it's still settling, because it'll settle, it will. And then, you know, maybe.
If you need dirt, let me know.
We'll do some dirt and some grass seed when it's ready. I know I've asked this a couple times where that silt fence was, there's still that like. Six or eight inch wide by six inch deep little trench when they did, when they redid the road here.
And I said something to Robbie about that and he never replied, let me say something again.
It's kind, you know, it's, I just don't want to break a front wheel off the lawnmower.
In the E Boulevard?
It's ki- it's kind of in the like right away. Where they put the silt fence to keep stuff. So, yeah, basically from the trees here down to, down to the corner.
Oh, and just on the east side, I thought it went around the V.
It, it goes a little bit around. You know, I broke a front wheel off of a tire just going up over a concrete lip into my garage. You know, probably from a little bit of abuse, but, you know, a six or eight inch hole by, you know, hitting it. Thirty-five times, the width of the, you know.
I'll make note, because I did speak to Robbie about that, but I'll speak to him again.
Otherwise, you know, the, like rock, the rock areas. I don't know if, when you guys have the.
You mean like on this side of the building?
Yeah, we, like, just the water washout ways, how the weeds grow in there, I don't know, you know, what. What you guys want to do with that, I know that I've, if I've had leftover weed spray, I can. I don't know what the ins and outs are of it, if I don't.
Treat it.
Just treat it?
Treat it and if we owe you, send us. Because ultimately, overgrowth is BS. Overgrowth is ugly, needs to be dealt with, your knowledge is.
There's no one on the park committee that's licensed to handle any of that.
Well, but I mean, if you do roundup or something, anybody can hit the roundup.
What I was gonna say, I don't know.
You got any volunteers that come out here and do that?
I was gonna say, any, you know, when you have the street guys go and spray some guardrails or anything.
Sprays, I don't know if I want next to this building.
True.
It'll change colors.
Yeah, he sprays the stuff that. Yeah, he sprays the stuff that, you know.
It's.
Well, it, it takes out buckthor and all that stuff.
I'll take care of it.
In one application.
Take care of it and charge accordingly. More than likely, it'll just be whatever the material is.
I just, yeah, I'm not having him do that.
So, um, just, so yeah.
Be a little overkill.
Like I said, I'll just, I'll probably just plan on charging you for the material, not my time. I know this last summer, we had. A couple months where I didn't do much and so I had asked if I could come and cut some trees.
Yeah.
So they weren't whacking us in the face.
Yeah.
You know, and I think I had like three man hours in, plus I disposed of it all.
Yeah.
So it was kind of a, if I can find something that, if I go, hey, I'm not doing anything.
Yeah.
I feel bad even this winter, you know, with some of my monthlies, I feel bad charging.
Yeah.
But I still have to have my insurance and all this, that and everything else. Um.
It's like going to the casino, man.
Yeah, right. So, uh, last thing was, I know we talked about those apple trees out front. I'm. Either way, I've been going around them for thirteen years. The, the two trees out.
Do they produce?
Yeah. Uh, we said we trim them up. So if you wanna trim them or we can trim them, it's up to you.
Well, maybe.
I, I guess I'd just soon hire you.
Just to trim, I don't have to trim up.
Trim them out and apple trees supposed to be trimmed, leave it alone.
What is the reason to continue? There's three trees out there and two are the apples that could go. What is your reason to hold on to them?
Well, whatever.
What I, personally, I just like the look of them and how pretty they are.
I don't know. You're gonna cut down the trees over here to put in a building.
Putting a building in, that's a whole different tune. You're not putting a building out there.
We were going to, but then we just smoked everything.
So let's get more in depth for a second. Are they a crab apple or edible apple?
One is a crab and two are edibles.
Oh, then just leave them alone. Trim them up.
Just, I mean, they don't need much, you know?
To, to whatever.
If we change our mind, the one that's half dead, you could probably take out, because that one is half dead, that crab apple.
Yeah.
You can remove that one. I don't care about that, but the other two I wanna keep.
So.
If we can.
You got your orders.
I got it.
You got it?
Anything else on your list?
That's it.
Wow, good job.
I know I had a list this year, right?
Yeah.
I actually thought about it.
So if it's dry out, your board come out and tear it out.
Right?
Um, your contracts in the drive, are we just renewing that or are you gonna change anything?
I don't need to change anything.
Okay, so we'll just renew for the next year.
So, or do you want an updated one with the, uh, current year?
No, we can just sign this one with the current year. So just a second, because you don't have it on your table, do you? Hold on, I just gotta, no, I gotta just go to the drive. I was too lazy to get into the drive and I thought, oh, I, I know what I have to know, right?
Hey, it's been a weird time. I don't know about.
Still early.
What's that about?
We're on the whole stretch.
June twenty-fifth. Where are you here? You're at the end. So this contract went through the end of um, twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
And so we'll just re-sign it for a continuation, which we do allow on this.
Perfect.
If that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one-year term or three years?
One year. Do you wanna renew him for longer than that?
Just asking, that's all.
I'm okay to renew it for longer. He did eight hundred a month for the twenty-two season and eight fifty for the twenty-three, which you're extending to the twenty-four.
Yeah.
What we could do is we could add on the, a sheet addendum to this. It says that we're gonna extend it for three years. And that in January of twenty-four, he can, or twenty-five, he can let us know if he's gonna do it for the same price or an increase.
Re- yeah, review costs.
Is that, is that okay?
That works, yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Because obviously, like you said, with the, with the building going in, there'll be a little bit less.
Yeah.
You know?
So I'm gonna make a motion that we will renew the Blade Runner service contract for twenty-four, twenty-five. Let's see, twenty, for two thousand twenty-four, for three years. With um, the ability that Mike can come in and ask for an increase of a per month amount. In January of each of the following years.
Could you put, how, what year do you figure the three, third year is up?
Twenty-six would be the last third, would be the third year.
October, October twenty-six would be the end of it.
Yeah. Any other discussion? The only other thing I'm gonna say to you, and I don't know yet, is that we may end up hiring you to do the sidewalks around this new building.
Yeah.
Um, cause I'm not sure, we'll have to talk to Todd whether it's something he wants to do under his contract for the next couple of years, but if not, we'll be talking to you.
Sounds good.
With that as service that you do?
I already do that for the Hudson Town Hall. They've got their, the county plows their parking lot and everything and I just do.
Unless he beats them.
A little.
And then he plows us a parking stall.
Right.
Thank you.
So.
Every day he does it, I'm going, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. So yeah, he does all their sidewalks.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Through, through twenty twenty-six and with the, in the new, the future boards have a right to, we'll review it every January.
Yep, just like we're doing now.
The costs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the bottom of the contract, you know, it's a thirty-day written, you know, I mean, if anything ever goes awry.
Days for each side.
Either side, so.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And listen, we're on time. Hi, how are you doing? Get to come up to the microphone with the green light, Steve. So Steve is here on behalf of Schmitt and Sons and Schmitt and Sons does our snow plowing, of course, from County Road V That Way. And he also does our summer grading and gravel for our gravel roads. And of course, you did our wonderful perk testing, which we appreciate. Um, did you want us to start or do you wanna start?
Go ahead.
Okay. I just find you to be very receptive and very open every time I call you, no matter what it is, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the care that you take in snow plowing and the care with the customers who may have their mailbox come off or whatever. So I do appreciate that. You're always open. I know we have struggled at times with River Road being a skating rink and since I drive it three, four times a week, I'm just like, wow. But it's been better this last year. And I don't know if it's due to you or the fact that the road is finally aging itself out, that it's starting to get better.
I'm not sure. We actually send two trucks there. First, I, I mean, they go from our place right to River Road, two trucks.
Okay.
One goes one way on half of it and one goes the other way, so.
Cause it's a pain in the, you know, what, all the roads. I'm sure. It's a pain. It is a pain.
Yeah, so there's two trucks go there. That's the first thing to get plowed, so.
You go cut all those pine trees down on the, the right of way that are shading all that on the south side that.
That would help. I'm sure.
I'm five hundred an hour and I'm not cheap.
Yeah. Um, I appreciate your um, expertise on the gravel roads. When you guys grade them, people are thrilled. You do an awesome job. You're gonna lose one of them because I, we probably wind up asphalt in one forty-fourth? One forty-fourth.
Okay.
So that one's probably gonna get asphalted in the next two years, but otherwise.
That's fine. There's no way to turn around on that one anyway.
I know. It's gonna get a cul-de-sac on it because there's gonna be a development on it, so.
Okay.
Um, I do appreciate that. You do a great job. And so I'll start over there with you because you're in public works, so. Turn your mic on though, please.
Uh, you do, you do a great job. I guess I'm gonna jump over to something else to, to uh, bring everybody up to speed. Are you. Interested in bidding on the potential work for the new town hall?
Sure.
Well, we'll keep you in contact and I wanted to have that discussion in a public meeting.
Okay.
Well, and there's two things. The contractor will have to hire an excavator.
Yeah.
But we also need to put in a septic system.
Okay.
And I know you do those, since you've done mine.
Yeah.
Um, so that'll be separate because we're bidding out the septic system separately under our request for proposals.
Sure.
Um, the engineer has already designed it, so that'll be part of it, but it won't be part of the bid. It'll be separate because. Personally, I'm not willing to upcharge, you know, pay the upcharge on, on a contractor for it.
Sure.
So.
Right, so that's why I wanted to have a meeting here today.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody, otherwise you do a great job and thank you for doing that for the town.
Welcome, thank you.
Go ahead.
It's a good day in my world when I don't get an email that says we need to have a closed session on your business. No, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I'll see you at Starbury.
Yeah.
So this contract, just so that everyone knows, goes through twenty twenty-five, April of twenty twenty-five. We s- we started it last February, so we've got another.
Um, one more year.
One more year. Are you gonna stay with us? This is the big question, everybody.
Oh, every year we question. Nobody wants to do it, but. But as far as I know, we'll probably be doing it again.
Okay.
So, there'll probably be some changes. We've been at the, the minimum has been six thousand since we started, so that will probably go up.
I thought we raised that. No?
It's been six dollars.
Oh, it was six thousand, we paid in advance.
Right, right.
Yes, we paid it.
So that, that would be.
That's right. I understand.
So, and it's, I think we've had the contract now for ten or eleven years.
Well, no, not, well, let's see, I've been five and, and ti- and nine, yeah, about ten or eleven because that. Was when Dan Gavin was there.
Thirteen is when we took it out.
When Dan Gavin was there is when we had the firm with the.
Yeah.
Pickup trucks.
Yeah.
What was that?
Two thousand thirteen.
So, having this discussion, I'm gonna dig into your thoughts a little more. Do you see a concern for the town that. You don't see Schmidt and Sons plowing it anymore? Do you, do you see where you have a future in it for more than a year? Am I asking?
Will he renew after the year is what you're saying?
Well. Me, me and Steve have had some small conversations and it's, we're, we're both fifty-two years old, right? And we all wanna see the beach. And do you have other people following up that are gonna do it or?
Problem, John, he's getting close to retiring.
Right.
And. And it's, and to find people to do it, you know, that wanna come in at one thirty in the morning is almost impossible.
And, and that's what I want the board to know or pre- or new board members coming on that. We're staring down the barrel of reality here, right?
Right.
So, uh, that's all I wanted to bring up was, yeah, we're gonna get another year out of them. Don't be surprised if. Three years down the road, we're looking at a professional setup. That's all I wanted to bring up.
No, and I've talked to Joel down at the county and I said, you know, if we don't take it, he said, I can't.
No.
He said, I can't do it.
They can't do what they have.
Yeah, it's to find trucks and to find guys. You, I can't go hire a guy for cash because I have to have insurance on him. And anybody that can drive a truck with a CDL, they're laid off in the winter and they're not gonna screw up unemployment for cash. They can't do it.
Justin, did you wanna say something? I didn't wanna skip over you and Matt. I'll go to Matt after you.
No, I've not had a complaint, so I, you know, to me, no news is good news. I don't, I don't go into public works too much. Um. You know, I do tease a little bit about River Road, the Saint Joseph's Drag Strip is what I call it, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things. The road's a bear because it's got. Awkward shading and it's got the coverage from the park and coverage from the other side on our stuff and, but no, I mean, I think. I have no complaints. I think it's all been good.
Good, thank you.
Matt?
Yeah, echo a lot of what Justin said. No complaints, so I'm, I'm definitely a no news is good news type of guy. Um, I defer a lot of this to uh, the chairwoman and supervisor marshal on this is, is the two closest liaisons to a lot of our public work stuff, so. Kind of defer on some of that, but as a, as a resident of the town, using the town roads, I'm always very happy with uh, the service work provided, so thank you very much for that.
Welcome, thank you.
I think it's a, a good job that you've done and I hope you stay on with us and I know what you're saying. You know, I struggle too because I think county is extended as far as they can be and they lost, what was it, four or five trucks last year?
Yeah.
They had two totaled.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they were in a world of hurt. They didn't even have trucks to go out and do the job, even if they had drivers.
Right.
And that was shocking when Robbie told me that I, at one meeting, I was like, oh my goodness. I mean, they lost two of them on ninety-four.
Right.
I mean, come on, people.
Well, they lost one this spring too.
Yep.
Or this fall.
This fall.
Hold on.
I mean, yeah, they, they've really had a tough time of it. And he said, who runs into these trucks that isn't watching?
Well, and the trouble is you lose a truck and you keep, just go find another one.
Exactly.
They're, they're just not, you know, they're.
No.
And we look for used ones, you know, the best used ones we can get. I mean, they, they need work. I mean, you can't.
Yeah.
For the amount of money that we take out of the township, we can't afford brand new trucks.
No.
It just, it.
No.
Doesn't work.
It's hard.
It's hard.
Well, we appreciate what you do. Um, next year at this time, when you come in, we can talk about a new contract review.
Yeah.
Um, right now you are on this one and it goes through April of that year. And of course, if you want a new contract next January, it would start, you know, after that April deadline.
Right, yeah.
Okay, just so that the board knows too.
Yeah, no, I've been talking to the guys and see what they wanna do. It's like, we all know we gotta make up our mind if we're gonna do it again or not, so.
Well.
Kind of a necessary evil for us too. I mean, we do, it does help us. It helps their business, but even though we hate it, but. But we do.
Well, yeah.
So.
Keeps the equipment moving.
You're right, yeah. So.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it and thanks for coming out tonight.
No problem.
And I'm sorry there's no snow.
Yeah. Money maker this year.
Another one to you. And the last one we have tonight is Robin Hendrickson and she gets here at seven thirty. If you want to, we can do number nine while we're waiting for her quick. You know, remember last year Hudson Air Affair did close part of Perch Lake Road and that email is in our drive here. Let me just read it.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So I move to approve closure. I move to approve closure of a portion of Perch Lake Road. On February fourth for the children's ice fishing contest from noon to four thirty. For the um, state stated beginning and end of the closed section.
So I got it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that passes. That's done. And then Dunright Cleaning, our contract with Heard started on November tenth of twenty twenty-two. So she's been with us just over a year. It expired in December of last year, so we have to see where she wants to go with this. When she comes in. Well, I will put him on notice, see what happened to him and see if he can come in on the February eighth meeting.
What do you mean you're putting him on notice?
Put him on notice and where were you tonight? What happened to him? Did you have an accident? Did you fall down and hit your head?
So, nothing beyond, um, missing this meeting.
Todd Dolan will be on our February eighth agenda because he is out of town for this one. Here she comes. And Nick Vivian is also out of town and he will be at the end of our November or just February eighth agenda. Hi there, come on up and have a seat at the table here.
Todd and Nick are both on February eighth.
Right, and then um, Todd Tuma I'm gonna do on March's meeting because his summer contract is up for renewal. So I said we would do a review of him for both winter and summer at the same time and talk about his contract in March. Welcome. How are you doing?
Good.
This is Robert, Robin Hendrickson and she owns um, Dunright Cleaners. And so your contract went through December thirty-first of last year, which surprised me. I thought it was through this year, so my bad. And so your contract went through December thirty-first of last year, which surprised me. I thought it was through this year, so my bad that we haven't spoke to you. So, um, she's the one that cleans the town hall. I don't know if any of you have anything you wanna say about that.
Are you interested in doing it for another year?
Okay. Is everyone happy with what they see?
I'm gonna ask.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta know about people who are actually in the building more than I am.
Same, I was just gonna say, what does Terry think?
You're on.
Yes, I am very happy. We had a couple of issues and we addressed them with Robin and she fixed them. Uh, one of the things was the time when you were coming later in the day and she fixed that. She's coming earlier in the day when we're here and everything's been great. I have no complaints.
Fantastic.
We work well together, I think, so, yeah.
Were able to work it out if there's an issue or whatever.
So right, and now I come on the same, like, unless if I let them know I have an appointment or something, I'm been coming Tuesdays. And if I can't do Tuesday, then I come on a Thursday, but I let them know in advance, um. And then other little cleaning things or so on and so forth, you know, they'd, hey, you know, this was part of your thing and then we reevaluate it and we move forward.
Yep.
So I think it's worked well anyway.
It has.
I believe, yeah.
And this time of year, things are always dirtier because the outside is dirtier, so that's always a problem. So this contract went to December thirty-first. Do you wanna renew it as it is or do you wanna bring forth a new contract to the town?
How, how you say that? Sorry.
Oh, sorry. This contract was dated through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
Right.
You've been operating under that here in January. Do you wanna continue operating under this for the next year till?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So if you do, then we'll just put an addendum on here that says that this continues through December of twenty-four.
Right.
And then we'll reevaluate next January.
Yep, and that sounds good. And I forgot to bring, I, I didn't forget. I have not been home yet today since five AM. So I did not bring in my new insurance like that runs February to February.
Yes.
But I will bring that next Tuesday when I come. Perfect.
And then you've probably heard, we're building a new building.
Yeah, I heard about it. I don't know much about it.
Over there.
Okay.
It's gonna be big.
It's seven thousand square feet.
Is it seven? I thought it was six. Is it seven?
I think, I think you bumped it to seven.
I was gonna say, we kind of need bigger.
Anyway, we'll need to have a price.
Well, when it, I believe it was a fireman that told me this and then I went to the girls.
Yeah.
Is this true? And so it's supposed to start this summer?
Yes.
When will it be done?
We're hoping this fall.
But then that could change the price. Is that what you're gonna ask?
Well, I was getting to a couple professional pieces of that. Did you see yourself needing any different costs for this town hall for twenty-four? Or are you gonna operate under the same cost?
The same cost and then when the.
For this town?
For this town hall.
Okay.
When that time comes, I guess maybe we will have to do a reevaluation if it's more.
We'll do a reevaluation.
So we'll have you take a look at it before we get in there.
Yeah.
Okay, and then schedule you for a meeting to come in and tell us what you're gonna charge us for it.
But just because I'd be a couple months short of the year.
Yes.
Yeah, and this is just a, an open discussion with all of us and fair to you that are, you don't see any changes in your cost of operation for twenty-four for this town hall, okay?
No.
And then when that town hall is completed, Teresa or Terry contact you to walk through the facility. Then you can go back to your office and figure out what it's gonna cost or if you need more staff.
And, and right, and I, and I, and two, I don't know if you know this, but I, I do, when I have the deep clean day, so one time a month, I do a general clean, one time a month, I do a deep clean. When I do that, I do the restroom in the fire hall, right? And then in the, um, in the spring through the fall, I take care of the outdoor restrooms as well too. So then the price does change and that's in part of my contract. That price changes in the summer. And we were, we did do that change in con- in, in the middle of our contract because that was arose later.
Now those restrooms are gonna go away.
Oh, they are.
And this building's gonna have two restrooms on this corner of it that are accessible from the outside.
So they won't be dingy like that?
No.
Oh, it is so terrible. It's fine. I'm used to them, but you know what I mean? I do other city parts, so.
Two actual restrooms right here that'll be on this corner.
That'll be great.
I know, we'll get rid of that building.
Right, I'm not saving you no money though for that.
No, but when you pr- when you price it all out, it'll be different because there's, you know, there's water in those.
Right, I, I'm cheesy though, but.
And then we'll probably lower this one down to maybe once a month depending on what the firemen need, because they don't meet here as often as we do.
Okay.
So this room is used all the time, but with the firemen, they're gonna use it once a week. So we're gonna talk to them and see how often they need to have it cleaned.
So I may still be doing here.
And there.
And there, and the restrooms, of course, in the season, okay.
Yeah, those restrooms you'll still be doing this summer because the building won't be done. The earliest that building's gonna be done is probably November.
Well and right, yeah, which is fine.
So we're getting off track just for a second here. Talking to her triggered me to ask, where do we have an area that allows her to get water or hot water or?
Right now for that, those outdoor bathrooms, she has to carry it.
I bring it from here, right now, because there isn't, right? So I bring my bucket from here, there. I know it sounds strange.
I'm not explaining this right. That brand new building, she's gonna need access to water to clean that building.
Have water in it. Those are great, those are bathrooms with water.
Yeah, I get that, but I mean.
The new building.
Like a janitor's closet or something. What do we do here? Yeah.
That's gonna be here in the mechanic room.
Right now I use the kitchen sink, so if they have a kitchen sink there, I'll just use the kitchen sink.
You're fine with that?
Just the laundry tub that's in.
No, I just use the kitchen sink.
Well, I'm just, I'm trigger next question because, oh gosh, you dipshits didn't think about that. So.
Really? Does that sound like a tub?
I mean, if you wanna put in a laundry tub over there, you can, but.
I'll put it on the list.
Well, I'm just bringing it up.
Otherwise, I really use the kitchen sink.
If you have two bathrooms to clean there with the bathroom sinks and toilets, like these are, you need anything more? You'll have hot water there, no?
Out of the sink? I think the other thing too is we'll have to, once you take a look at how the building's laid out, that's probably changed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a big ass thing to be clean and screw around with the sink ain't the way that.
Well, I agree.
I don't dump it down the sink. I don't dump it down the sink. I just get it from the sink.
It's the ease of doing your job.
Well and right, thank you.
Right.
Set in the holes and you give the stuff.
Yep. I'll put it on there for Bruce. Not a problem.
Make that happen. So the new building will have two restrooms like here.
So it has two, right in, right here at the back of the building are two restrooms with two stalls.
Okay.
Two stalls and yeah, and one has a urinal, one has a stall, this has two stalls. Then these two on the outside are gonna be gender open, so they're not gonna be men, women. In other words, anybody can use them.
Sure.
So they'll just be toilets at each and sinks. That's it. They'll have hand dryers, automatic soap, automatic faucet.
And hot and cold.
And hot and cold running water and that's it. Yeah, so they'll be easy and they're gonna be tiled to the ceiling.
I would say if it was a time that I wasn't coming in here. It would be eas- it would be nice if those restrooms there would have some access to.
They're gonna be gone.
But they'll be on the side of the building here, right?
These two, they're in the building.
Why, what, can you tell us why you would need the old office? Is that what you're talking about? Or you're just talking about the two new, the two new bathrooms?
The two new bathrooms.
These two new bathrooms, this is the front of the building. There's a sidewalk that comes around and the doors go in. They don't have any access to this building. They're only used from the outside for the park.
I guess to s- to simplify the discussion of the bathrooms that Teresa's pointing out are gonna replace the.
And I know that.
Okay.
How far away is it from?
From the front door?
Yeah.
She's trying to figure out.
Figure out how far I have to bring my water.
Sixty-eight feet. But there's hot water in them too.
Untrue, okay.
They're fully, they're fully operational watered bathrooms.
It'd be a little tough with the waterless faucets, you feeling or cleaning.
Also understand.
No, I, it's fine.
Also, we, we're not gonna have them open twenty-fourth, you know, they're not open all the time. So they're gonna be closed, like, we could winterize them if we wish, right? Because there's no one playing baseball in February.
Right.
Um, so they would probably be just shut.
Shut down.
And you wouldn't have to worry about it.
Right. Okay, yeah.
So just like now, yes.
Yep, we're not gonna, we're not gonna ask you at minus thirty degrees to be walking outside with a bucket of hot water to go mop some floors.
Yeah, but just so you know, they'll have tile floors, tile walls.
Okay.
That's the intent of the engine architect because that makes it much easier to clean and it stays much more sanitary, you know.
So is the bathrooms this year gonna open in February or not until May?
Not till May.
I mean, we're in March now.
No, we're in February, not quite. We're in January.
Well, no, I know, but it feels like March, right?
That's true.
Making sure that we're not opening until May.
Anything else from anybody for her? Anything you'd like to share?
No, I think that somebody will go through everything with me as we get closer.
And you'll see it start to happen, so. But otherwise, we're here. We're here till we're.
But you will find out how often they're gonna use.
Yes, we'll be talking to them about that. They're just not quite there yet to tell us, so we'll figure that out.
Okay, okay. And then we'll just reevaluate the prices at that point.
Yep.
Thank you.
And, um, we'll get the addendum done for your contract, so next time you're here, you can sign that.
Oh, okay.
To extend it another year.
Okay.
Just for this building.
Yeah, you'll have that to, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, we'll have it ready. Yep.
And then I'll have the insurance too. It's not until February anyway. It's just runs February to February and.
Yep. So, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Okay, yep, thank you. Is there a certain time? I do have one more question. Is there a certain time, one of the firemen, they have meetings at a certain time and.
Monday nights.
Every Monday night?
Yeah, pretty much.
Oh.
So by the end of May, they have Monday.
Cause he was trying to ask, well, is there a certain time that you come to do the, you know, to.
But you see, we can let you in the building as long as you're here when they're, when they're here. That doesn't matter. We'll let you in.
Yeah. Okay, so the way we're doing it is fine.
Yes, okay, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Good night. You can go home. It's time to go home. Okay, so I explained to you who's coming in on what dates. Anything else from anybody on the agenda, agendas coming up? Next week, Bruce will be here. HVAC's not ready. They will be here on the eighth. But everything else, doors, closures, I, there's a whole list he's got, so we'll go through all that. And get that finalized. And then HVAC will come on the eighth. He figures that will be a fifteen to twenty minute discussion and we're done. And we'll bring up the laundry sink. I'll send that to him.
Well, then the other thing that says you're talking.
Turn your, turn your mic on.
Since you were talking out loud, those exterior bathrooms.
Yeah.
You guys go home and think about how you want, but I've seen enough people go in there and trash them tile walls. I really think that we should look into wrapping them in stainless and being done with it.
Oh, that's a good idea, but just put tile on the floor then.
I, I would leave it concrete.
Or leave it concrete?
Yeah, cuz I have li- like Somerset pea soup days, little building that I take care of. Those people have wrecked that thing.
Really?
And, and now they've had to gut it and put stainless in, so we might as well start off with.
Well, let me put that on the list.
And, and for what it's worth, I'm gonna stick my neck out. I wanna see how they're secure and all that stuff. Because you need to make it terrorist proof. They'll kick the shit out of the urinal divider between the toilet and the urinal. Well, great then, then we ain't arguing about it, but.
There's just one toilet and a sink. That's all that's in them.
Oh, so there is no divider?
No dividers.
Perfect, but anyways, wrap, wrap the thing and wrap the thing in in stainless and she, she's got a good point there, terrorist proof toilet, cuz them, them people are pigs. They jump on the porcelain ones that are bolted on the wall and bust them off. Yeah, so.
And it's only two toilets. It, they'll be more expensive than a porcelain one, but they're indestructible.
He was, I said that, that Bruce is talking about tiling those outdoor bathrooms to the ceiling. And he's stating, now state what you just said so you hear this.
I stated, I'd like to see them wrapped in stainless steel and be done with it because then there is no opportunity to be a terrorist. And then the same thing with the toilet. It needs to be a terrorist proof setup for the toilets cuz in my career, I see where people have devised great ways of jumping on things and wrecking them and getting something in there and destroying them. And then the, the other fun thing about it, like what happened in Somerset was when they bust them things off at two thirty at night and the water's pumping away all night long. In, inside of that.
It already has concrete walls on it.
Well, stainless, you can take a pressure washer in and just hose it down.
Right.
And then, and then since we're talking out loud, we'll ha- we'll have to I know it's out there. We should put one-way check valves on that. If you would break off something, then it shuts them off. Because it will kill septic system if it's.
I know.
Running for four hours.
Right.
Well, yeah, and the mess with it.
So I'm glad we're talking about this before we're victims.
Any other little goodies you know like that?
Not yet.
I mean, if people are bonded determined, they're gonna wreck anything.
Sure, but I mean, I don't wanna pay for it twice.
I don't want to pay for it either.
Talk about it tonight.
Yep, so bring all those concerns next Thursday to that meeting. We're starting at five o'clock or six o'clock. Is anyone opposed to starting our board meeting on the eighth at five thirty?
The eighth.
What, is that a regular board meeting?
It's a regular board meeting.
No, I'm fine with it.
What do you care? You'll be at home.
Well, then I'll be back up and, up in action, I hope.
He says that. He says that.
No, it's not a regular ask, but I'm feeling, when you see the agenda, I'm feeling a little overwhelmed. So you have a week to cha- think about it. We'll see what, how the agenda shakes out, but I'm thinking five thirty.
Nine, we're gonna get done at nine instead of nine thirty. It doesn't matter. Leave it the same and keep it simple.
All right.
Just a little tight for me, but I could.
Well, I can leave it at six and we just have to move our way through it. That's fine too.
Yeah, that or I'll just join via Zoom at the beginning. That's fine too.
Yeah, anything else? Otherwise I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We're all done. Thanks so much, Matt.
See you, guys.
Bye.